All right, now call the city council special budget meeting to order for August fourteenth. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, invocation been given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Dear Lord, thank you for this, this evening. Thank you for the chance for us to all to get together to discuss these issues. Lord, I'm asking you to give us wisdom and insight as we go through and make these decisions so that the best for the whole city. Thank you for all of our kids and teachers and families going back to school this week. We're being relatively smooth and asking you for your protection and for a great year in Jesus's name, amen.
Maybe seated. Madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember McHear here. Councilmember Taylor here. Deputy Mayor Bernard here. Mayor Anderson here. We have a quorum.
All right, Ms. Shaper, we're gonna be going over the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four draft general fund CIP.
We are.
Whenever you are ready.
So our governmental services total requested this year is eight hundred and ten thousand. Um, and that includes the neighborhood revitalization. You can read that. Actually, we'll start with the first one, the timekeeping hardware and software, which is actually budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It will work electronically with our um, the new software that we're getting. Um, so we're gonna wait until we get the new software in and see if we actually need it or not. That's why we pushed it out a year. So we may take that out next year if our new software does what we needed to do.
Okay.
Um, the second one, the community development block grant, neighbor neighborhood revitalization. Um, this is for if we choose to submit a grant for sidewalks, um, and infrastructure for residential and commercial areas. It's in here. It's always good to have it in our CIP if we apply. It's a plus.
I think a lot of things, if they're not in your C R C I P, you can't apply, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, the third thing is a conference table and ten chairs to replace the um, the table and the chairs downstairs at City Hall. The, the bottoms of the chairs are falling out and it just needs to be replaced. And then the fourth thing, the finance building, the kitchen and the bathroom needs a little bit of an upgrade. The um, bathroom sink is actually a, a mop sink, the big one, let's you know, swing. Yeah, I'll take you for a tour. And then the kitchen has no counter and the sink in there is a, actually for a bathroom. So we requested that.
Okay.
We don't have an oven in there, truly.
No, we have microwave oven.
Okay, that'll work.
So if you guys want to discuss those before we go on any further, if you think.
Any questions on any of those items?
Yep, mayor, I have a question on number two when you, she was talking about the community development block grant, you say, repeat what you said.
So several items, whenever we're applying for the grants, whether it be state or federal, if you don't have them in your CIP, then you actually can't apply for them. So some things you just always want to have one in there that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that your only question?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
I think we're good to go.
Okay, the next um, is police and we have two hundred thousand, three hundred and forty in there. Um, it's the contract with the sheriff's office that we purchase the patrol cars every year, so. That's pretty simple.
Okay.
Um, the fire department, we have a total of a hundred and forty-five thousand in this year's budget. And I'm gonna, if, well, no. Okay, so the first one is fire hydrant replacement and maintenance. Um, so we've been doing this for several years. We budget, we put some in the budget so that we can replace uh, fire hydrants as needed.
Do you know if we've spent the forty thousand in the recent years?
I don't, but I can look it up. Or have that.
Chief might know.
We have not, but we're working on it. So part of our bigger problem is figuring out which ones need to be replaced and then getting the, the staff to have the time to do it.
Yeah, now is it city staff that always replaces those or?
Not always, but most of the time, yes. But part of, so part of the problem is that city staff can do it much cheaper than dragging it out. So I think he's trying his best to do that.
Yeah.
And he might be able to jump in and add a little bit, but I think the bigger problem is the goal is to do it cheaply, you know, like as cheap as we can with city staff. But I think he just hasn't had the time with people to do it yet.
I'm sure the most efficient thing is to do, you know, X amount of them, or if there's like, if you wait till the end of the month, and if you have a couple of days, do them here and there, that sort of thing. Obviously, don't want to spend more money than we have to, but we also want to protect our people, so.
I have, yep. I have a question for chief. Chief, when was the last time we had fire hydrant replaced? Is, is it something we do every year? Or is this, when was the last time we had some replaced? Because as I ride around town, you know, I'm not no chief, okay? But some of them seems to be very old.
Yeah, so that was one of the things I was gonna say, we have some fire hydrants that are over a hundred years old.
Okay.
The lifespan of a fire hydrant is a hundred years.
Okay.
So we've been sort of saying some of these need to come out. So some of our fire hydrants are directly on the main, which is kind of a problem. You don't, you know, if something happens to that fire hydrant, there's, they then have to scramble at whatever. Nine o'clock at night to figure out how to shut off eight blocks to fix that fire hydrant.
Sure.
So ideally, it would make sense to, to get these things before they become a problem like that. They can sort of figure out how to locate, isolate the smallest spot they can to replace that fire hydrant with a valve. So we have replaced, I, I don't know how many, a couple this year.
I think since I've taken over in February, we've replaced five.
Okay, so.
Five of the twenty-four.
So he, I, yeah, we have a list we're working on.
How many?
Well, we have, we have a list of twenty-four that we're working to replace that are really old and also two port. So ISO is this thing that rates us as a city. And if two port hydrants, they don't accept those as a qualifying fire hydrant. So we're, that was part of our list is to remove those, and those are also the ones that are over a hundred years old.
Okay.
But that's, that also becomes part of the problem. Those are the ones that are usually directly on the main.
Yeah.
Because there's some of the ones that were installed a long time ago and they didn't do valves, all that. So we, we do have a, a plan we're working on. We're just trying to get to the, to the end.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, please proceed.
Okay, the second item we have is Motorola radios and we have five per year. I think we increased it to, hold on. So I'm just gonna read it. So the, the radios are the firefighter's main mode of communication. They are used on a daily basis on every call to communicate between other firefighters and central dispatch. The radios are individually programmed and include the life safety features. The radios are tested and approved to be. I don't know what is that word? Safe.
Intrinsically safe.
I couldn't pronounce that.
You go into a, an environment with gas, it's not gonna light that gas off.
I see.
Thank you. Uh, the radios that are being replaced will be ten years old at the time of their replacement. So that's another one that we have going um, throughout. It'll be a continuous replacement.
Okay.
Um, we have bunker gear, which of course everybody knows it's um, protective gear and has a lifespan of ten years from the date of manufacture. In an effort to reduce the, reduce the risk of exposure to cancer-causing chemicals, bunker gear is purchased in two sets for every firefighter. This equates to fifty sets of gears to be replaced every ten year period. The city annually applies for a grant through the city's insurance carrier and its insurance carrier preferred insurance group for five thousand. However, it's not awarded every year. And sometimes it's awarded and we don't get it.
Yeah, we, we have got it for the past three years for bunker gear. But it's just one of those things that it, it could stop next year. We don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the remodel of the shower in the bathroom and chief, if you wanna.
So that's, right now, we currently have one bathroom with one shower. The idea behind this is to separate that into two separate bathrooms with showers. Um, when they come back from a fire, it's ideal that they get a shower within the first hour is what it said. So when we have one shower, that, that just slows the process down, get everybody in, because we gotta get the truck back in service also. So if we have two different rooms, they could each be going in and getting something done to get cleaned up and get back out, getting the truck back in service.
Sure. Okay.
And then the next item we have is the cable machine for the gym.
All right, so we have weight equipment over there that's pretty old. Some of it's breaking down. We can't buy replacement parts. So this is basically to get some of those older pieces that don't really work out of the way. And this cable machine, we think will take up a little less room, because we're running out of room over there anyway. So we can figure this one machine will help clear out some of that space.
Okay.
The next item is Bluetooth speakers, which attach to the SCBA masks and portable radio, which are vital for clear communication.
I have a question for the chief. Are we, are we at full staff yet?
We are right now, yes. Well, except for our uh, inspector, which we're working on. That should be, me and Mark have been working on that, so we're still trying to get the job description nailed down so we can hire, but that's the only thing we're missing right now.
And how many is, what's that total, chief?
Eighteen firefighters.
So is Clint not inspector?
Nope, he has moved back onto the engine.
Okay, did not know that.
What about your administrative?
How long has that been?
Oh, he moved back probably four months ago.
Okay.
Maybe three. Um, uh, Melody was also reminding me, we do have an administrative assistant. That we're in the process of trying to hire. We have applications that's been posted already. So I'm supposed to meet tomorrow with Denise to go over applications to narrow that down. So those are the only two positions, administrative assistant and the fire inspector.
Got it.
Clint still, is Clint still able to do it and tier him until you find somebody else? He's still qualified or?
Yeah, he's still a fire inspector and he helps, but so he's moved back over to the engine. So he does training on his shift. He does scheduled stuff with them. He's running calls, so it's a little harder. But I definitely call him in and put plans down and we're going over those when we have time to.
So he still has the qualif- qualifications, he can do it until.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And so does the chief.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Very good.
Okay, item number seven is five-inch supply hose. These are one hundred foot sections of fire hose that are used for supplying the fire apparatus. They have a ten-year lifespan. There is currently only one spare hose in inventory, but historically about three fail every year.
Okay.
Item number eight, pony hose. These are the same as above, just shorter version, typically about twenty feet in length. Item number nine, ballistic vest. We are in need of one more vest this year for the member in command of our department. Item number ten, a workstation locker for the officer's room. A workstation and locker matching the other lockers is needed for the officer's room. And in twenty-four, twenty-five, the aerial truck will need to be replaced as it'll be past its useful life.
I got one more question for you, chief. Uh, early this year, I think you were wanting to start some type of a, a class to get our fire station upgraded nationwide. Have we, how's that going?
Yeah, the accreditation, so I will say the accreditation is moving very slow at this point, because I am doing inspections and my other job at this point. So it is still working. I have assigned, so every year we kind of go down and I s- I sit with the officers in charge and give them, you know, a couple of jobs. So I have one of my lieutenants as my accreditation assistant. And once a month, we sit down and go over a couple of questions and try to get some stuff answered and nailed down. So we have started that process. We have a file that we're putting all this information in to keep the process going. Now, it is a pro- that, it is a five-year process when you're working on it diligently.
Right.
So we are working on it, but we're ner- we're not working on it like we should be completely, so we're still working on it though.
Okay.
So when that assistant get there, you're gonna be working on it.
Well, that's the goal. That's one of the goals, yes.
And then one other comment, the aerial truck was nine hundred thousand and the um, price increased to one point seven million due to the engine.
Okay, so, yeah, there's a few different factors in this. When I was talking to the person to get a price these past couple of years, he was pricing the same truck we have, which is a seventy-five-foot ladder. So months ago, we had this discussion of what, what the city needed. If the city has five, three-story or thirty-five-foot buildings or taller. ISO requires us to have a hundred-foot ladder. We don't right now. So this truck that we have, we will have for about twenty-eight years when we get rid of it. So I'm thinking that what we need to do as a city is invest in a hundred-foot ladder, because of, in the next twenty-eight years. We already have three buildings, thirty-five feet or three stories or taller. If two more are built, you're gonna need a hundred-foot ladder anyway. So if we have this truck for twenty-eight years, now's the time to invest in it. So that's, that was a big portion of why it went from nine hundred thousand to one point seven. Now, over the past few years, there's a whole bunch, a bunch of changes and admissions and all this other price raises with everything. So that's part of the other problem of.
It's an expensive ladder.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty grand a foot.
Yeah, well, it's not all going to the ladder, but yeah.
So chief, you see us having three stories in the future here in Avon Park?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean, height-wise, they consider three stories to be thirty feet, right?
Thirty, thirty-five feet or higher.
Yes, I would imagine we have several that are at that point already.
Yeah, so like a good example is the um, Allen J Center at the college. That's not considered the three-story building, but it's much higher than thirty-five feet.
Right. Yeah, even like, I'm sure many of the new core buildings are far above thirty feet. The wellcraft buildings probably above thirty feet. Jacaranda's definitely above thirty feet, so.
Yeah. So this will be here way longer than me, way longer than any of us, really. So that, that's up to you guys to determine. That's what I'm proposing, but that's up for us to decide whether that's in the best interest of the city. And that's, I'm proposing it is, it's like I said, this is a twenty-five to twenty-eight-year truck. It'll be here for a while.
Sure, so this is the CIPs is not necessarily us pulling the trigger on buying the vehicle.
Correct. This, this is for next year.
Right. So as far as uh, different types of funds that we can use, I know that we have, there's state revolving funds and different things like that. Is there a possibility of a very low-interest way to stretch that out perhaps?
We could probably approach um, and see if we could get a loan.
Yeah.
Interest, yeah, a low-interest loan.
Realistically, we would be ordering that probably when the end of next year.
Um, I mean, the goal would be fairly quick in two thousand twenty-four, so this is a three-year build of a truck.
Okay.
So when we order it, we still have to wait a few years for it to get here.
Okay.
Our plan is to start this October, start building what we want in it, so that come next October, we can sit with the company and say, this is exactly what it is. What's the number gonna be to, to basically be ordering in November, December?
Well, whenever it is that you can get ready to actually order it, if you will, just get with Melody and city manager and you guys can hash out some possible finance options, if that even makes sense, or. So or if we have the cash, we can do it then or whatever.
Yeah, we used to um, before a previous city manager, we used to finance trucks. That's been two thousand, well, two thousand eight was probably the last truck and that one was probably fina- I mean, not, not the last truck purchased, but that was the last truck probably financed.
Sure.
Two thousand seventeen, we started buying them outright. But that's for you guys to decide.
Okay. Cross that bridge when we get there. Any other questions on the fire department outlay?
Yes, sir.
I do have a comment, though. The um, desk for the officer's room, I've taken that out of infrastructure, but that's really gonna come out of general fund.
Okay. Transportation?
Transportation Department, we have a total of one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Eight hundred thousand of it will come from infrastructure and four hundred fifty-six, three hundred and fifty dollars will come from general fund. So item number one, the street improvements, this is a, this is always in the CIP plan. It carries through and it is for the uh, transportation department to continue its road improvement program inside the city limits. To improve roads and traffic flow. Projects include paving city-owned dirt roads, maintaining existing roads and installing new signage and striping to comply with the manual on uniform traffic control devices guidelines. The second item is replacing sidewalks and curbs. This is also an ongoing um, project to replace new so- sidewalks and repair existing sidewalks. Uh, this improves pedestrian, pedestrian pathways and continues their connectivity. Um, item number three, stormwater and drainage improvements. This one is another one that is ongoing. Uh, the transportation department continues to correct nuisance flooding, provide con- corrective maintenance, replace and upgrade infrastructure, improve water quality and reduce costs. Plans include the development of water quality models and accurate inventory of all basins, inlets and outfalls. The model will be GIS-based and provide a means to evaluate drainage and water quality issues.
Okay. I believe all three of those uh, are being spent, or could be spent several times over every year, right?
It could be, yeah. Um, item number four is a mower replacement program. This is new, I think it started last year, and this allows the streets department to be able to replace two commercial lawnmowers each year.
Of which they have, how many?
Um.
Roughly.
We've got roughly twelve.
Twelve.
They get thousands of hours a year. I just looked at mine. I've got one that's like in the home. Three years, I have seventy-five. And our mowers have. Twelve hundred and fifteen hundred. They have uh, twelve, fifteen hundred hours long.
Okay.
At any given. And that's, that's yearly.
I see. So by the end of the uh, six years, they're, they're gone.
Yeah, they're uh, six years will be pushing probably five, six hours.
Okay.
That's where the mechanic working on most of the time.
That's what the mechanic work on. They, they still, they still work. They would go, they would do well at auction. But they're just not as efficient as we need them to be.
I see.
The cost for the breakdowns and maintenance.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, item number five is a Hallett man lift. This tow behind man lift is needed because the lift the city currently owns is old and unreliable. The current lift was purchased at auction and is constantly breaking down. The controls are unreliable and have left city employees stranded up in the air when the controls do not operate.
This is a rollover from last year.
Rollover from last year, yes, sir.
Because we weren't able to find one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Item number six is a John Deere tractor with a bush hog. This is a tractor and bush hog for mowing mainly on US twenty-seven and will also be used throughout the city where space allows. Currently, the streets department has no large mowing equipment and must borrow the tractor from the wastewater department in order to mow the swales and ditches on twenty-seven. Using a tractor enables it to be accomplished in one pass, when it takes a small zero-turn mower's three and a half passes to complete.
Now, you wanna add to that, David?
Okay.
No, okay. Item number seven is a Ford Super Duty five fifty with a crane. This truck is needed for the city stormwater program. The crane is needed to aid in lifting manholes, storm drain, grates, pumps and other items. Other items out there that are heavy for the employee to lift or move.
I know we've uh, purchased a few of that same type of uh, of a truck with a crane before. How many do we have in total or are they being used by different departments?
I think we have two, one big one, one smaller one, right?
Yep, and then the mechanics also have them as well.
Okay, would this be equivalent to the, the big one or the small one?
Uh, I could use the smaller one. I'm not sure what size it is, but it's, it's like a five fifty, five fifty size.
I see.
It's not the big Duramax, uh, you know, like mechanic truck.
Sure.
It's regular size.
You wanna add to what, why it's needed?
Well, the storm drain, drain grates, um, there's very few in the city. We can actually lift that by, by hand. Whenever we do lift them, we have to get the sewer department to aid with their truck, which it, it's not a pain and it's not a pain for them. I mean, they're busy all the time. It's more a pain for us when we have to do something that's important in our, on our side and we can't do it.
It's inefficient. Okay.
And with D E P starting to really nitpick us and everything.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, asking is, is there, I'm assuming there's a lot more work that's gonna start being done with the.
We're getting stuff done that we need to do. It could be a lot better.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Please proceed.
Okay, item number eight is a F-one-fifty extended cab, two-wheel drive. This truck will be purchased for streets department to replace a two thousand five Ford F-one-fifty that is no longer cost effec- effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Item number nine i- is two F-one-fifty two-wheel drives. These trucks will be purchased for the streets department to replace a two thousand one Ford F-one-fifty and a two thousand eight Ford Ranger. Both are no longer cost-effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Item number ten, a Ford two-fifty cargo van. This van will be purchased for the streets department to replace a two thousand nine Ford E-two-fifty van with a hundred and seventy-three thousand miles used by the facility's custodian. This vehicle is no longer cost-effective and will be sold at auction. Item number eleven, message boards. Message boards are needed in order to close down Main Street for events, parades and the such. A total of three message boards are needed to, are needed per FDOT regulations. Two boards must be placed on US twenty-seven north and south of the Main Street intersection and one place near Avon Park High School. It is an FDOT requirement to have message boards put out a minimum of two weeks prior to any event that requires the closing of any portion of Main Street. As it stands, we run a very high risk of not being in compliance with DOT regulations when closing a state road due to the city owning only one message board. The city currently borrows signs from DOT or Highlands County Road and Bridge Department. However, these items are unavailable for us to borrow sometimes. And to rent two message boards costs about six thousand dollars for two weeks.
Oh. Wow.
We, we looked at the renting and that's how much it is. We F-Dot told me to get, check with FEMA, see if they had grants. They had none. And we just haven't found any grants, but we have to have them if we want to close down anytime Main Street. They won't tell us, because I said, are you gonna tell me no? They go, no, but you won't be in regulations, so.
Yeah.
With liability-wise, be, it's a lot of money, but.
Sure.
You know, these message boards could also be used, and I had put in there like shelter locations and that. Because I'm assuming, David, that the ones you quoted are bigger than that little one that the city owns, where we could put, you know, shelter open. There's water here, food here, whatever during a hurricane.
Okay.
Or slow down on Main Street.
Okay.
Hey, item number twelve is a utility vehicle that is needed for miscellaneous tasks, mainly in the mall area for weed spraying and being more mobile instead of parking the truck and walking the entire length of the mall or driving the truck from one parking spot to another, typically towing a trailer, which takes up a lot of space with backpacks, with backpacks, sprayers, et cetera. Vehicle will also be utilized for sprinkler maintenance and other jobs around the mall area. Yeah, David, do you have anything?
Yeah, so, so as it is now, uh, we've got one. The whole, all the streets department parks use it.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
The entire public works department uses one that we have now. I've got eighteen people that share it. This one would be mainly used for the mall, the, the guys that have on the mall, so it's dedicated out there for them to use. Um, but basically just going up and down the mall instead of driving their trucks from one spot to another or parking on the mall or taking up three parking spots with a.
Taking up three parking spots with a trailer. Um, it's just more feasible to have something small and and mobile to to do that work with.
Is that incomparable to like a Kubota or a side by side?
Yeah, it's it's a side by side uh utility vehicle. John Deere, John Deere makes some, I think, third apartment has has a couple. Uh, same thing is just, you know, just a utility vehicle. It's got a bed on it. Some of them not.
Okay, item number thirteen is a F two fifty diesel aluminum flatbed, two wheel drive. This truck will be purchased for the streets department to replace a two thousand seven Ford F one fifty fuel truck. That no longer is, that is no longer cost effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. You have anything to add?
The the truck we have now for the fuel truck, uh, it's just a regular F one fifty. It's got two huge fuel tanks in the back. That kind of truck's not meant for stuff like that. It's uh, since I've been here three years, the transmission's blown out three times. Basically, it's doing the job that it's not meant to do. That's all we have.
Sure. I'm assuming aluminum because of uh chemicals.
Uh, yes.
Uh, item number fourteen is a Ford F two fifty diesel four wheel drive with utility bed and compressor. This truck will be purchased for the streets department to replace a two thousand eleven Ford F two fifty truck that. Is no longer cost effective to maintain and will be sold at auction.
Uh, this this truck, um, we don't have a truck right now that pulls equipment. Larger equipment, so I can skid steer or excavator. I've got both. This truck will pull it. It's it's a gas F two fifty truck. It's. It's old, the air conditioner goes out all the time. Uh, the transmission's gone out in that once or twice since I've been here. It's just not effective. Or we what we need.
Okay, item number fifteen is a Ford F one fifty two wheel drive. This truck will be purchased for the streets department to replace a two thousand fourteen. Ford F one fifty that is no longer cost effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Item number sixteen is an F six hundred aerial lift truck. This truck would be used. This truck would be a force multiplier for the entire city because it would serve multiple departments. This will serve as a huge time saver for putting up Christmas decorations, changing light bulbs on Main Street, tree pr- tree trimming and. Inspecting roofs and buildings, main maintenance of buildings and any place else where where needed.
Yeah, on that particular one, I was curious of how many hours you realistically think that it will be used every year and is there a possibility of perhaps a used option? Instead of a hundred and eighty grand for the truck?
Yeah, it could be a used option. We would use it uh throughout the year doing tree trim because it's it'd be so much more mo- mobile. Than the a man lifts. Man, there's a time and place for a man lift, a pull behind man lift, and there's a time that's not.
Right.
But we would use it throughout the year changing light bulb. We could even change light bulbs on twenty seven with it. Right now, we have nothing to do that. Um, so we're. Kind of hamstrung with with vendors trying to get them to come out and do uh light bulbs on twenty seven, which. It's.
Sure.
Difficult.
Yeah, just typically, you know, like uh the utility companies, you know, they sell their trucks every, I think it's every two years, every three years. No matter how many hours they have on them. So at auction, you know, these vehicles go for a tiny fraction of what they cost new. So just curious if that's been thought about. I didn't know if this was something that you plan on using every single day, all day, and so that you'd be putting so many hours that it's not really effective to buy a used one? Or if it was something that would be more of an occasional type use?
It would get quite a bit of use. I don't think it would warrant getting a new one if if that's an option.
Yeah.
The amount of hours we would put on it versus what an electric company would put on it's probably not even in the same ballpark.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions? Did you say yes? Oh, okay.
I thought he said yes to.
No, street sweeper.
Okay, the street sweeper currently the contracted sweet streets. I'm tongue tied tonight, sorry. Street Sweeper Company only does sweeping once a month per the contract agreement. This vehicle is needed for the city stormwater program. Owning a street sweeper could. Owning a street sweeper allows it to be done on an ad need is as needed basis. For example, storms where Main Street could have been cleaned in its entirety in just a couple of hours instead of a week.
Sure. Any idea what we're currently spending per month to have that contract company do it?
I can look it up.
I would assume that this would be. An employ- and another employee that would need to be driving this truck?
They'd have to have a C D L. I've got a couple myself and a couple others that are C D L qualified.
Was the intention to take over obviously the monthly use as well as additional needs?
Right.
Okay, so it would be cutting this bill that she's about to tell us how much it is per month?
It's gonna take me just a second to get there.
Let me ask my question while you're looking. Uh, basically, we've replaced uh quite a few trucks the last three years. Including this upcoming year and then three next year. So am I wrong in assuming that after next year? You probably won't need to replace hardly any trucks for more than five years or or ten years?
Yeah, the the newest truck I have now, I think it's the twenty two, so. Once these get replaced, they'll all be within.
We have to replace all of these. What will be the oldest vehicle we have?
The oldest is two thousand one.
I can't remember what the name of that company is.
When is that?
We still have a few old vehicles, I guess, is what he's. That's the oldest one in my department. I'm not sure about the other one.
David, who does the street sweeping? Do you remember the name? S C A?
So, I got a question. So if we replace all of these vehicles here, would that? Take care of all of your old vehicles? Everything would be updated?
What he just asked and the answer was no.
I'm sorry?
It will. But I've got eighteen people also under me. Um, and right now, they're also doubled up in vehicles, which is not bad. Um, but I still have a lot of old vehicles that are using.
And some of these aren't in this coming fiscal year. Some of them are the year, the.
Going out.
Several of them are two fiscal years out, counting the next one. And like this street sweeper is not till, he's not asking till twenty six, twenty seven. But in answer the truck, yes, we still have junk out there. I I mean, I brought it up before. I mean, we they didn't buy trucks for years and years and years and like we're not replacing our new. Um, J J, our maintenance guy, he's driving an old truck within two or three years if that state lasts that long.
Yeah, his his is on there to be replaced.
Uh, so I I guess part of the issue, which is a good issue to have. Is we finally increased the amount of employees that we need on the outside to take care of the city. And once we increased those model employees, we had to get vehicles for them to use. So. I understand where we're going and I just well hope that we get there sooner than sooner than later that uh. Yeah, I know we probably replaced. Probably close to twenty in the last three years, including this year, don't you think?
No, I I I agree with you. I'm just saying the facts are the city didn't, you know, it's like fire hydrants. You know, we got all these replaced because they weren't replacing them and and it the same thing with, we still have um. Meters out there that probably aren't even reading and people are probably getting water, not paying for it because. And again, not to blame anybody, we just haven't kept up, but. David knows that I got with him and he agreed. We've some of these new employees, we didn't get new vehicles for them or find old vehicles for them. They they doubled up. I mean, two people can do it as long as we got a trailer that can pull two of the the uh the mowers and that, so they were doubled up, but. I mean, if you just see city vehicles go by, some of them are still old and raggedy vehicles and not say we can't drive old vehicles. We're gonna drive them so they're of no use to us, but. So I mean, I agree with you. Yes, there is. We're still playing catch up, but like I said, all these reading off aren't all in this fiscal year. They're just in the five year. In the five years of wish list, I mean, we may get next year and not have the money to buy anyway, but we certainly will. Certainly slow down as we get new ones because they they last ten, fifteen. What's stones? Twenty three years old now? And we can't even, we it hasn't even opened up yet to order. I think it's three vehicles. We're still waiting to order from this fiscal year. That'll probably have to go into next fiscal year because it's not opened up to order them.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I actually worked uh for the Bell system, they usually, believe it or not, kept most, most of their outside vehicles, not their. Big equipment vehicles. They usually kept them eight to ten years. And so they, you know, utilities do keep them a lot longer than probably that they should. Like everything else, uh, ci- city government as well as public utilities. You know, they have to respond to the citizens who pay the taxes to pay the bills, so. They make things last as long as they can, but you're right, we can't make them last and not replace them without some type of coordination, which. I agree, we're finally doing it now and I give everybody credit for that. Mister Robert, you too. Glad to have you here and so. Yeah, I'm I'm glad we're getting close anyways.
So how much do we normally get from auction when we sell them? Sort of like an average?
Since I've been here, we haven't taken anything to auction. In fact, we've got several out there that we've had to pull off and get them fixed and. For employees to drive because we are down.
Yeah, I think a good contrast would be what we do for the sheriff's department contract. I think we're, is it four vehicles or five vehicles we're buying for them? Every year?
Four.
Yeah. So if you think about how many officers that they have in Avon Park, you know, I don't know, you might know the exact number, but it's. A relatively low number compared to how many vehicles we're having to buy.
Twenty.
Yeah. Twenty?
Yep.
Right.
And I went through this as sheriff's office when I was down there as chief deputy, sat down with the finance director and we came up with. At the time, they probably more now because they've got some more deputies on it. We replaced twenty vehicles a year in order not because. Sheriff Benton took over, we're in a position the city's in with old, broken down vehicles.
Sure.
And right now, we're down to chief mechanic. If anybody knows a chief mechanic, a real good mechanic, we've got one that's. Got more than he can handle now, but that that's how that's how the government, sheriff's office and the city keeps vehicles run a long time with in-house mechanics. Because it would cost so much to take these vehicles out, especially we're stealing parts off one vehicle to put on the other to keep it running, so.
We're we're replacing twenty percent of their vehicles every single year. So basically every five years, it's a brand new vehicle. I I would highly doubt that we're buying that many vehicles in Avon Park, but.
Correct.
I just have a question. And I just, is this is for my own clarification, actually. So the hallett man lift roll. Would it do the same thing as the aerial truck lift?
Uh, the aerial truck is, it's much more efficient. Uh, I can't sit those lift that haul out lift. I can't sit it up on Main Street to change light bulbs. Um, I can't set it up in the street out there because the arm, it's got four arms on it to go stretching out, so it would end up blocking. The lanes of traffic.
So then.
Getting a permit to close the road. I mean, that's the only way to use it on on a street.
So then the lift truck would actually be a better idea than the hall, the lit man lift thing?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I think the part of the issue is 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 who's using the the different lifts. So a lot of our maintenance is done with the with the man lift that they currently have. And I think what they're talking about is more for the, yes, it is maintenance, but it's the real quick things where in the light instance, you're having to go from pole to pole, pole to pole to pole. Or from tree to tree to tree, whereas uh with the the hallett lift, they're basically if they need to repaint. A section of something or if they need to tear something that's more in depth down and and actually spend a few hours there. It's tow behind a vehicle, yeah.
So you'd need two people in order to use it, right?
Still, one guy can use it. Exactly. But the the uh aerial truck, you're still gonna have two people, or I guess you can still do the same thing. One person can drive and then one person can be in it. Or the same person might have to get in and out each time. It's it's kind of the same deal.
Shelley, were you asking, do we need both? Is that what you were kind of getting at? Yeah. Things you're getting at, do we need both of them?
We need both because um. On the mall, uh, for example, trimming trees in the mall, I can't drive that truck up on the median in there. Because it would do too much damage versus pulling it a tow behind trailer.
Also, you have to have a C D L to drive that truck, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that limits your pool of employees that can drive it. Unfortunately.
I wasn't trying to take away. I was just curious for my own benefit.
Yeah, and I mean, if it comes down to a budget problem, they, you know, we've been dealing without it, so we could probably stretch it out, you know, manipulate. Do one, wait a couple of years to another, that sort of thing.
And and our current one was bought used.
I don't know when it was bought used.
Ten years ago, I don't know, but it breaks down all the time. It's become a liability for. Not working and the person up in it that can't get down, so that's why. And I asked, I mean, that was a good question. Back when Rick brought this up last year, I asked him the same thing. Do we? You know, justify needing both of these, but we certainly need the the lift in this year's. It got moved from last year to this year. It was the other, we couldn't find it, it was under budgeted.
It was under budgeted.
It went up.
Yeah, it went up.
It went up after we got um, so.
Yeah, I remember whenever they bought that, before that, uh, they used to rent it so often that we could just about. Buy a used one every single year, so much they were spending in fees and I think they've had this one for probably somewhere around ten years, I'd imagine. Um, but like you said, I've I've seen him waving his arms a couple of times because he was stuck up in that thing, so.
So out of the two, the you, the what is that thing called again? A U-Haul, um, man, the man lift? Out of the man lift and the lift truck, which one would get the more use?
I feel like they would both get used pretty regularly. Uh, the the man lift would probably get used more.
Any other questions? Moving on.
So the answer to your question about the street sweeping contract is two thousand dollars every other month.
Two thousand dollars every other month, okay? We'll have to do a little addition on that one. Go ahead.
Parks and Recreation, we have one million four hundred sixty thousand dollars budgeted. Uh, eight hundred thousand will come from grants and. Six hundred thousand will come from infrastructure and sixty thousand will come from general fund. I have to update that slide. So the Durham Martin Park. Um, plans for the Durham Martin Park include. A passive paved parking lot, stormwater friendly irrigation system, a walking trail. Additional bleachers, second childhood playground area, relocating and constructing a screened. Recycled dumpster enclosure and development of additional pavilions. Fifty percent of the project would be funded by. Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program. And the amount of twenty thousand, I mean, sorry, two hundred thousand, the other fifty thousand would come from local matching funds in the amount of two hundred thousand. So we would hope to get a um, R P A grant for a hundred thousand and then city infrastructure funds for. The additional hundred thousand.
Okay. Do we benefit at all from uh inflating these numbers in our C I P to hopefully get more grants?
I'm I I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that. I know that this year we did get funded by F R D A for the M L K. For the two hundred thousand. So but if we inflate it there, so the way that it works when you draw the money down. You're gonna draw it down um, in the increments that it's.
There's like a certain amount that gets assigned to us.
Yeah, so fifty percent would be F R D A, twenty five percent R P A and twenty five percent city. So each drawdown, you're drawing it down by that amount.
And you don't know how much we're assigned each year?
Yep.
You do know?
Well, this year they gave us two hundred for the M L K.
Okay.
Yeah, fifty percent, but if it doesn't utilize all of that money, we just give it back or we don't draw it down.
Okay.
But the budget that was submitted, you know, totals the four hundred thousand, so.
Okay.
So the M L K um junior sports complex, the the funding works the same way. Um, this would be. Um, for we have the existing concrete bleachers, addition of new bleachers on the visitor side. Improved basketball courts, replacement of rusted fencing around the field. Restriping the existing parking area and addition of pavilions on the visitor's side. This is the one that we were awarded, correct? F R D A in the amount of two hundred thousand. So now the process is going to R P A. Um, we have to go out to bid for the services before we can present it to our pack.
Okay. Set of curiosity on the Durham Martin Park. I'm assuming you have an idea of all the deficiencies that we have out there. Do does this pretty well cover it or is this kind of a drop in the bucket?
When called drop in the bucket, pretty well covers it. I mean, there would still be more than that.
Like that much more, you think?
Well, I guess it all lot depending on what else we wanted out there, but it it covered a lot with Cool and Cobb going over it. Well, I guess it'll, a lot depending on what else we wanted out there, but it, it covered a lot with Cool and Cobb going over it.
Okay, cool.
Actually, on that, we're, we're, um, you know, we got that survey going on at the airport.
Mm-hmm.
It's a pain in the butt.
I see.
But, um, that, I was on a Zoom with them the other day with Jerry on and because one of the things on the Durham Martin was to put like a, a path around it, you know, parents could use waiting on their kids or whatever. And there isn't that much room between the fence and the outfield fence, so we talked about possibly moving that, the new fence back. Given, because it's the portions that fam will not be leasing, we want to make sure, in fact, um, Joseph was, I don't know if you talked to Jerry today about that, but, um, about the, uh, the well we've got out there. That Bell Street, getting more room there in case we need, you know, more, to build more out there, so. But it's, it's being worked on, we just have to legally prove we own that property to put in for the next time.
Any idea how long it'll take to legally prove that?
I don't know, but you know, I think I brought up before, there's a sign out there, they already gave us one FERDAP years ago out there, but with that attorney that was on with the DEP with us, it'd probably take a while.
Oh, okay.
The main thing is getting this, the survey done out at the airport, that's been quite the pain for the surveyors and the engineer overseeing it.
We don't know, we don't have a finished date for that survey.
Oh, it's, it's getting pretty closer.
Okay.
Okay, item number three is Lake Tulane Playground. Lake Tulane and its beach area has historic significance to the city of Avon Park. Restrooms are in need of repair. The park has capacity to provide the expanded recreational use and can be developed to include additional pavilions, the child playground area, beach improvements and parking, and the funding would be the same for that.
What was that I heard about the parking, Melanie?
Um, it says improvements for parking, so.
And I, did anyone say where exactly would the parking be? Would it be on the side of the road? Cause quite frankly, I don't see where parking could go, other than you put lines on the side of the road that's next to the park.
Th- that one, when we put in for a grant on that, that'll all be worked up by an engineer. And last year we could only put in for two, we got one, and this year it'll have to be decision which ones we're putting in for. We got the one from MLK, but we've got Lake Tulane, got going back to Durham Martin and Donaldson Park, so. There'll have to be decisions made by council now at this meeting, but I'll bring it to you. But yeah, that'll be done by an engineer.
Okay.
Excuse me, item number four is Donaldson Park. The funding would be the, the same for this one. The park sits on the east side of Lake Verona with a large sandy beach, which okay, there I go, stumble again. This park is on the east side of Lake Verona with a large sandy beach, which city and county residents and other visitors truly enjoy. Plans for Donaldson Park include a splash pad with age-appropriate areas and fencing, an amplifier, a new irrigation system throughout the park and new additional child playground equipment, new or refurbished sports facility, IG pickleball courts, and the funding for this would be the same. Okay, um, yes, go ahead.
All right, here's a big one. The Boys and Girls Club ACs are gone, done. Nobody can fix them. We've got, David could tell you more, but we got one working on about twenty-five percent. I get calls all the time, they're kind of understanding. It's looking like we, he had one, um, AC company come out, they estimated about sixty thousand dollars. I've got a call into Cory, the emergency manager, to see if they've got any grant money down there. He said they're scrambling because they've got ones down at Towers and that, but he would be calling me back. But, um, if not, we're looking at probably sixty thousand dollars or more coming out of general fund, and we're right now still sitting in hurricane season, and we know it's a shelter, hence why I called the county to see if they could help at all, but.
Okay.
David, you wanna add into that, how bad it is?
That's, since I've been here, um, I'm not sure how many thousands of dollars we've, we've spent to get them running. They've basically been mandated, they've, they've worked when we fix them, um, but they're, it, it's not worth it to fix them. Uh, the cost is the same as replacing the entire unit. Uh, the freon they use in those units is outdated and not used anymore unless you're grandfathered in to, to whatever unit you have. They don't install units with that freon anymore. That's why it's so expensive to, to work on them and replace them. But the, the condenser units are all pretty much destroyed, um, this, I mean, they're twenty, twenty something years old, twenty-two years old, twenty-three years old. All the units over there are in the same condition.
Okay.
So, sorry, so it'd be sixty seven thousand for how many, how many ACs?
So in the gym, there's two, uh, there's two air handlers in the top of the gym that run the gym area. Each one of those air handlers has two condenser units, so four, four condenser units and two air handlers for the gym. And then two, uh, regular systems for a classroom and an office area, like a household five-ton unit.
Does the Boys and Girls Club have any funds in their organization to help with maintenance of the buildings they use, or?
It's not in the agreement with them, they, they'll pay for it, but they've called and they haven't volunteered at this point. When I told them how much it was, it was like, oh wow, because I told them it wasn't gonna be fixed tonight or next week at this point, so I haven't asked them, but they haven't said anything.
Okay.
But our, our, again, our thing is, is it's hurricane season.
Sure.
And gonna be used, and I don't know if this can wait until the next budget, another, you know, the end of September. Cause we don't even know if we, we may have to classify this possibly as emergency get done, because how long is the wait to go out to bid?
September.
September twenty-eight.
In the middle of September, so.
Okay, sometimes emergencies cause emergency funds, so.
Is that, is that, does that building have a, um, generator, a backup generator?
Yes.
Yes.
It has to as a shelter, yeah.
Well, I thought so, but.
Yeah, no, I just meant, yeah, that's why it's good.
Yeah, sometimes obviously in an emergency situation, they can bring in the standalone units, you know, how the military does and things like that. FEMA is probably who would have something like that, but if you've already called FEMA and they said there's no funding available, then that probably means there's no ACs available either, but.
And I make, uh, one suggestion, I'm, I don't know about the, the chiller type units, but for the the standalone ones that you'd use for the classrooms and that, I would strongly suggest you buy them with a minimum of, if you can, extended ten-year warranty and parts and labor, because, um, they're majority of them within five years or less, they need some small part replaced, which will cost you several hundred dollars, if not more, and, uh, extended warranties, you know, for like a, a three-ton isn't that much more money. Like I said, the one with the chillers on, I'm not sure about that, but, uh, extended warranty will pay for itself, especially if you get at least ten years on it, just a suggestion.
Mark, how often do we use the Boys and Girls Club for hurricane, for hurricane shelter center? How often we use it?
Well, in oh-four, we used it three times in storms, and what was the one in seventeen, it was open. They didn't open it for this last one last year, year four.
Every time there's a declared emergency, it gets used.
Right. I mean, the, the last one wasn't that bad, so they just opened up the one at Fireman's Field, but all the other hurricanes, they've opened it up.
I didn't know.
Previous to oh-four, it had been thirty years or better? But since oh-four, it's been probably ten times or.
Right, and if a hurricane hits bad on the coast, they, they come in here, they'll open it up to let people from the coast come in when they're full over there, or the shelter gets destroyed over there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a it's a gamble not to get it fixed. It's gotta get fixed one way or another, the kids are over there, it's hot now, so.
Okay, last item.
Item number six is for fiscal year, actually twenty-five, twenty-six. It's a Ford F-150 Extended Cab, four-wheel drive. This truck will be purchased for the Parks Department to replace a two thousand fourteen F-150 truck that is no longer cost-effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. So our total general fund capital, um, request for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is three million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand will come out of grants. Infrastructures, I have to calculate that because we took sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty from infrastructure and put it into general fund, so that'll be updated.
So I notice on the police, you don't have anything for the additional years. Is there a reason for that?
The contract ends at the end of this year, so we'll have to renegotiate the contract.
Okay. Any questions on that?
So that's the end of general fund. Water, wastewater capital improvement. So we, of course, we have the the very first, what, five or six, um, items are ongoing items, the meter replacement program, the water line transmission program, the lift station rehabilitation program, the lining and pipe bursting of the wastewater lines, the water treatment plant repairs and maintenance, and generators for the lift station. So line item number seven is new, it's for, uh, spare pumps. And I'll let Joseph, um, maybe give a little bit of information on that.
All right, um, I, uh, asked for that budget line item for spare pumps because seems like in the time that I have been here, it's been about once a month, we're sending a pump out. Um, pump repairs have gone up at least double in the past year. You went from, you know, two, three thousand to averaging five to six thousand per repair. There's, there's a couple of other things that, reasons why, one being that we have forty lift stations and we consider a master station, a lift station that takes flow from another lift station, um, per DEP, you will go out of compliance if there's not a pump put back into that station the same day. So there is, there is a few stations that will run the same size pumps, but those spares are already in another station.
Joe, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
There's, uh, pumps, um, that do fit between other stations, but we do also have a lot of stations that have oddball pumps, and granted, they are master stations. Um, I asked for this to ultimately shelf spare pumps to keep us in compliance when the time comes. So.
So when?
How many spares would that be?
Um, I don't, I don't know yet, and it's kind of what I talked about Melo- to Melody. Um, I would like to get to a point where we feel comfortable, and then we can cut the funds. Um, I do know that, which is a very common pump in the field right now, is a twenty horsepower uh, flight pump, they're roughly thirty thousand dollars. So I don't think the ninety's gonna get us extremely far in the first year, but considering some of those stations do use the same, same size pump, we can move them around until, you know, we get into year two and three and we've got what we need.
Yeah.
So.
And what's your ultimate goal of how many spare pumps?
I would, I would like to have one for each master station and then any oddball station that might have a different pump.
How many is that?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, that's why I've kind of spread it out over the five years. Hopefully it won't take five years.
So you estimate that ninety will get us three more or two more?
Uh, you're looking probably three to four a year.
Okay.
The smaller stations obviously are gonna drop in price, but the average pump's a twenty horsepower and it's thirty thousand.
Yeah, I know that even two years ago that we were really shorthanded on spare pumps, and sometimes we had to borrow from other locations or other cities or whatever in emergencies, so I think it's a good idea to build up your spares and, uh, and so I think it's a good plan, so I like it, so I think you should go for it.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight is automatic hydro flushers. The water department will purchase forty automatic hydro flushers, which are needed for flushing and dead-end points in the water system. Anything to add?
I think that's pretty straightforward, um. We, we don't know if we'll actually spend all of that, but since we have it there, we wanna kind of go into this year, make sure that we're attacking this project correctly and, and getting things knocked out. And putting them where in their, their, excuse me, sorry, putting them in their most useful spot, location. Um, some of the ones that were budgeted are gonna be a little overkill. Um, you really don't put a two-inch auto flusher on a two-inch main line. Um, so, you know, we'll buy them, we'll buy as many as possible to implement, but we don't know what the actual number's gonna be yet for those either.
Okay.
Okay, item number nine is a brush cutting finish mower. The water and wastewater departments will purchase this brush cutting finish mower attachment for the remote controlled mower, which is needed for mowing slopes.
Um, I guess just to elaborate a little bit, we have that, uh, remote controlled mower. Um, it does a lot of the bank mowing, um, they, I guess they use it amongst other departments as well to do ditches and stuff of that nature. I guess this will just give us the ability to do a shorter cut.
So if you're using the original mowing unit, this is just an attachment for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the life, useful lifespan of that mower, do you know?
I do not.
Okay.
Item number ten is an F-350 four-by-four diesel extended cab with utility bed and strobes. This truck will be purchased for the water department to replace a two thousand two Ford F-250 that is no longer cost-effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Number eleven is a, an F-550 four-by-four diesel extended cab with a utility bed and strobes. And this truck will be purchased for the water department to replace a two thousand four F-350 that is no longer cost-effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Item number twelve is an F-350 four-by-four diesel extended cab with utility bed and strobes. And this truck will be purchased for the water department to replace a two thousand eight Ford F-350 that is no longer in service due to a blown engine and will be sold at auction. Item number thirteen is a generator with a pad and electric, an electrical. So the SCADA system is at the Public Works Barn, and this is a backup for that, so I'll let you kind of elaborate.
Um, of the stations that we do have on SCADA, the two of the three water plants, the wastewater treatment plant all runs off a DFS SCADA, the main server for that system is at the Public Works Building. And any power outages, we lose complete communication with all of those locations, um. Again, that, that is a compliance issue with, uh, the state, and ultimately, another issue is when that building loses power, you lose access to all the offices, you lose access to the doors, so you're pretty much locked in or locked out at that point. There's one door that you can come out of but not go in. But if you're on the inside, hopefully somebody's on, on the inside when you lose power to open the door up for people to get in and out, so.
You, you wanna explain, a couple may not know what the SCADA system is?
Uh, yes, uh, SCADA is a telemetry system that is the call-out, ultimately it's what calls the call phone. So if there's an issue at a lift station or the water plant or sewer plant, it will call the on-call technician. And then they will either del- they'll do the work themselves or they'll delegate it to the water wastewater operator, depends on where it's at.
Yep.
But it's the call-out system for those areas.
Single most important thing we have in Avon Park, uh, in a power outage would be keeping the wastewater going, so. Anything we can do to make sure the wastewater is never down, that should be priority one.
And you said that this item number thirteen is a compliance with the state?
Uh, yes, if, um.
Why we haven't, why we don't have it by now, if this was compliance?
Uh, ultimately, I guess it would be that somebody just passed, either it was never brought up or when things were out of compliance, they just didn't say what they needed to say, so I guess it might have been a
Wow.
One of those issues, so.
I have, I have a question.
The truth is D E P, a few years back was told we had something we didn't have. That's the truth.
Okay. Go ahead.
So line item number eleven, an F five fifty truck is replacing a F three fifty truck. Would that three fifty? I mean, that's, you're getting a two fifty, would a two fifty and a, okay, this um, a female, you know, I, two fifty, five fifty. Would it not be the same and would it be cost effective to just replace it with a three fifty or another two fifty? Um, I mean, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar difference.
Mel- Melody, uh, this isn't the trucks that are recoding for F two fifties either. Is that? I thought we changed some of these.
Oh, I might have to make that one.
Yeah, I thought we switched some of these to two fifties, truthfully. So I don't know. I, I thought we did.
Actually, when we sat down, yeah, it must be Melly just didn't get this in there because I brought up Rick always wants these five fifties and sometimes you don't need that big of a one, but um, yeah, it just didn't get in there because I remember when we sat down with Joseph, I ask him, if you need it, you need it. But if you don't need a five fifty for the cost, you can do with a two fifty or three fifty. So Melly will update that.
I think we only have one large piece of equipment that we haul that we actually needed a five fifty-four. And then the other five fifties we have are all crane trucks, I believe. So if it's not hauling that one piece of equipment, which I think is an excavator, if I remember right. And then if it's not that or a crane truck, then chances are we don't need to have a five fifty. You guys will work it out and get back to us.
Yep, we will. Um, the item number fourteen, which is in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, is a ground penetrating radar cart. And I'll let Joseph.
Uh, the city has two of them right now. One is probably all of ten years old, if not older. The other one's fairly new. Um, the older one though is the, the actual computer part of it, the screen, if you will. Um, it's, it's been a little rough around the edges. It's getting where it's hard to see. Um, that's one of the largest costs on the cart. Um, just all around, it's getting a little flimsy. We are busier than ever with all of the preliminary developments and new construction and ultimately so give us the opportunity to not, I don't know what happens. It gives us the opportunity to distribute the workload. Um, we have one guy that does locates all the time. I have another gentleman that's using the second cart to work on our mapping. Um, at any given point, if there's something that needs to be done, they will break off from what they're doing. Some of it is time sensitive, but they break off from what they're doing and they go help locate a break or um, whatever it may be locating a main line for a, a valve. But it gives, it gives the opportunity to spread the workload around and ultimately be more efficient. Everything we do is underground for the most part. So it's our eyes under the ground.
The item number fifteen is lift station relining program. The wastewater department budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand annually for the relining of lift stations to prevent H two S from eating away the lift station. Do you want to tell them what H two S is?
Hydrogen sulfide. But ultimately it, it eats up everything, uh, concrete, steel, other types of metal. Um, does a lot of damage to this lift station. So I know we have handfuls that need to be uh rehabilitated and lining's part of that. Um, it's, it's in dire need. So quite a, uh, quite a few of them are at least, so.
Have we been lining our lift stations in the past?
Some of them have liners. Some of those liners are now peeling off. Um, it, some of this, it depends on what type you go with. Some do require maintenance, some don't. Um.
So the liners will need to be replaced at some point.
The epoxy liners, yes. The ones that we're looking to use if possible would be uh, it's called supercoat and there's a couple of vendors that can apply it to concrete base liner. It's about a inch thick. Um, the thing I like best about it when it does fail, instead of popping the whole liner off in the station and ultimately what could clog the pump, uh, it'll just leak in that one spot.
I see.
Then come in and be patched in that area versus.
So, so the hundred and sixty thousand would be used for all of the, to replace all of the liners or just some of?
Uh, just some of them.
And how often are liners replaced?
Uh, good liners should last. Um, I don't actually have a lifespan on that. Uh, I've only been in this business about ten years and I've seen liners that have lasted probably twenty-five years. So, um, I know the supercoat comes with a ten year warranty. So, um, that wouldn't, I would assume that probably the average lift station average, um, what that is is probably hard to determine, but it's probably roughly fifteen thousand dollars for a liner. So we might be able to get a good bit done. And I'm hoping some of that will also be made up in the uh, lift station rehabilitation, which is number three. Some of that will be lined as well in that. So.
Okay.
Please proceed.
The item number sixteen is in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It's a trencher for the water department and it will be utilized for running new utility lines. Also in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we have a VACCON truck. This truck will be purchased to replace a two thousand seventeen that will be transferred to the storm, to stormwater department and a two thousand one VACCON truck that is no longer cost effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Also in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, there are two F two fifty four by four diesel extended cab with utility bed and strobes. This truck will be purchased for, these trucks will be purchased for the water department to replace a two thousand twelve Ford F two fifty and a two thousand thirteen Ford F two fifty that are no longer effective to maintain and will be sold at auction. Item number nineteen is a twenty fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, Chevy Silverado sixty-five hundred crane truck. Is this one that you changed too, Dave?
Oh, I didn't change this.
Okay, okay. Um, this truck will be purchased for the water department to replace a two thousand seventeen Ford F five fifty crane truck that is no longer cost effective to maintain and will be sold at auction.
I'm probably the only one here that doesn't know what the truck under item seventeen is used for. Could you explain what that is?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What?
The VACCON truck.
VACCON truck.
What is it?
Oh, uh, VACCON tra- uh, truck has a um, a vacuum on the back with a tank. Uh, I believe this one we have is six hundred gallon or seven hundred gallon. Um, so they can vacuum out grease, debris and manholes, lift stations. It has a I think like a five thousand PSI jetter on the front, one inch line. It can run about five hundred feet down into sewer main. Um, it basically is what we use to maintain our gravity system.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that ends the um, water wastewater C I P presentation. Um, now I mentioned last time that we are requesting a new position, which is a budget manager. Um, the salary would be sixty thousand dollars. The total including benefits would be eighty-one thousand one hundred and ten. And about forty thousand would be um, used through the general fund. Water and wastewater would be about twenty thousand and sanitation would be twenty thousand. So I look for direction from you, whether we want to add that position or not.
Explain why it's necessary.
So right now we have, there's a lot going on in the city and the finance department. Um, we're managing. Well, we just got the DOT that'll come before them next time, nineteen grants off the top of my head. Um, we have the budget going on right now. We have the audits coming up in just a few, you know, just a few um, months actually will be full string into that again. So it's, they would be utilized to um, just uh, manage the budget. So I do budget revisions weekly, generally, you know, this, this item is overspanned. Where are we gonna get it from? We're gonna get it from here. So they would help do that and help prepare the budget.
So you think if you had this person, you would uh, be able to accomplish more grants? Is that what I'm hearing?
Maybe.
Okay.
Or manage them more efficiently.
And to add that outside of grants, we want to, we'd need a grant person just to do grants, but Melody's a director and she's also over utility billing. She doesn't get a chant, two minutes a week maybe. And they need, we need some help in there. That's still far from where it should be. It's improved a little, but it's far from where it should be. She hasn't, she's just unable to supervise because all she does is sit at her desk. I might as well put her in a cubicle and let her work. She, we have to have a budget manager and really I could justify two or three more positions in there. But i- if we could find somebody and we might for sixty thousand dollars because we had it in there before. And we knocked it down to a specialist just to get someone else in there to help. We needed somebody with knowledge that can you know, and I go by experience that share ourselves. We had a budget manager almost every day, every other day they were coming in, hey, we need to move money from here to here. We kept up on it, not wait till the end of the year. Then you don't know how much money you got here or there, but that she does that all the time and would she went from end of year to getting ready for the audit right in the budget. So I don't know how she does it.
And now I'm gonna be right, budget right back into audit.
I, I would like her to find, hopefully find somebody if we can get them for sixty thousand that's got some supervisor experience that can actually supervise the people that sit other than the purchasing agent, but oversee the two finance specialists. So she doesn't have to do that because I really would like her to free some time up for utility billing. I think we're gonna find a few things there.
I have a question, Melanie.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, you, you run that department. I'm not saying you don't know what you're doing. So here's the question. Would it be better for you to hire two specialists? Than a budget manager? The reason why I'm asking is because, you know, maybe we can get two for the money.
Well, the problem is with the specialists that we have now, the training that's required to bring them up to where they need to be.
Uh huh.
You know, it takes my time to, to be out there to train them. But with, if we can hire a budget manager that has municipal experience and knows fund accounting and, you know, budgeting in a municipality, that's what I'm hoping for. Somebody that can come in and do it, you know, with a little bit, you know, it's all.
You, you pretty much don't have to train them. They know what they're doing. They came in the door and know what they're doing.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? No. Okay, they're looking for a direction. So, so move. Do you need a motion for this?
No, just a general, we'll pass it during the nor- the um, budget.
Okay. Is it, is anyone opposed to hiring this position?
I'm not opposed at all.
All right, you have your direction.
Thank you. Yes.
Make sure he or she is almost as good as you.
Even better.
Oh, no, not better. That's job, job security. Remember that.
Well, you know, good leaders hire people that are smarter than them. Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we shoot.
We'll meet, we'll meet in the middle. We.
If we can get her character, that's what I want. Our next one is, we put in there what a three percent cost of living for all the city employees other than the actually foremen's on up. But this is the fire department in here?
Yes.
Okay, which would include them. If you approve it, I'd have to get the approval from the, their union because we're still in negotiation with them. I think they deserve it. They're not overpaid as it is. And I would hate to see the city continue to fall behind on the pay of the employees.
We're also gonna have to do a big raise next year also to get up to the minimum state level?
No, we'll be actually just this, I wrote it down.
Fourteen forty-two, aren't we right now?
Yeah, we'd be up at fourteen sixty-two and if we went up four percent, we'd be at to fifteen, but tha- that's no big deal because that's just a step one. If a state, if you gave the three percent and it was fourteen sixty-two, we'd just start somebody's step two, they'd be at fifteen. So we're, we're, we're good there.
Okay. I, I, I don't have a problem with this. I think our, our employers are doing a great job. I, I know I make a lot of comments about the vehicles, but I'll say this. As I drive around town, I see our city vehicles all over the place. So I see our people out there working and I'm glad I'm not out there working in this type of weather. So I think not only the ones that work outside deserve it, but those that are working hard inside to support them. I'm all for this three percent and uh, the laws that doesn't include management, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
So the next uh, article that you have there, you've got supervisors, foremen's, public works director.
I was just telling her, I would take it. Yeah, I'll take the public works director first because you're by, when your charter got changed a few years ago, you, you have to approve the salary range.
Mm-hmm.
Right now it's seventy to eighty. I've been here three and a half years. We had one person and we know where that person came here at eighty with a P E. Um, we have no one apply. The ones that apply have less knowledge than David Roberts. I mean, they've done some roads and that. We're in desperate need of someone knows utilities. Sebring, they just hired a public, they have two, I've said before. They, here we only have one public works um, director that's over utilities and what David Roberts do. Down there, they have one for each, just one utility. Eventually it may come to that. I mean, we're growing. Told someone the other day, they think, oh, we don't want growth. It's coming whether you want it or not. But I talked to Joseph because he knows some people, maybe not anybody put in, but he thinks if we upped it to ninety-five. Now Sebring, theirs was ninety-two to ninety-six when they just hired one who isn't an engineer. We're not gonna get an engineer unless we're put up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, somewhere around there. So I'm asking to raise it or make the range between eighty and ninety-five to see if we get some people that may, you know, jump ship somewhere else who want to come to Avon Park for ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars. But it is, that's the biggest department the city has. We need someone out there bad.
I agree with you, especially if we get another guy like Rick. I, I think that we could, what I've seen tonight, I think that I, we definitely need that position filled.
Well, Joseph, I mean, Joseph is the one. You know, he's gotta come to me for things and, and, and we're very blessed to have Jerry as a city attorney because he has the background that most of city attorneys don't know anything about utilities. So you know, I send them to Jerry a lot because we want to make sure we're doing things right and Jerry's like, we pay him, but he's very helpful and looks out for the city. But yeah, Joseph is completely overwhelmed because of what he's got to do, then oversee his foreman who's still learning and some new people, but it, there's two positions that are vital in, in this city and probably most cities. And that's the one sitting next to me and the public works director. Those are two big areas and with growth coming and, you know, everybody, we're all, almost daily, Randy just sent me the one to do the final letter for Culver's um, sign off on their site plans and all that. So I mean, they're coming and there's other ones found. We have to have a public works director that knows utilities.
Yeah, I mean, public works in particular, that is where the vast majority of our income comes from. That's where all of our future growth will come from. We are right at the precipice of uh, possibly getting a multimillion dollar grant to expand our wastewater treatment plant as well as building out potentially all of Avon Park lakes and all the surrounding areas of Avon Park. We really can't afford to do that wrong. We really have to get it right the first time because you're never gonna have enough funds to do it over again. So like you say, I absolutely echo the importance of having a good public works director. Hopefully we can find one that has the experience. Um, but other than finance department, we really need that. So strongly agree.
Okay, the next one, the supervisors are at sixty. I would like to move them to sixty-seven because of all the pay raises they get. They, they're exempt. And that's for some of them, it might be gray area to be exempt. They don't make overtime. So their people can make more money than they do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they.
These positions are not included in the three percent raise, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. So that we have five supervisors and um, and then we got the foremen's. Foreman is something they didn't have here. I made one last year with an existing position. And David Roberts supervises eighteen people. You're supposed to su- supervise between three and seven. He has eighteen. He needs a foreman that will, I'm not asking for one. It'll be a current employee because they'll be mowing and that, but they'll be helping David with the day to day stuff. They, they currently make fifty-five and if this three percent, the well, there's two other position I want to make. One, we've, we've got one for Joseph, a foreman. They used to call him a lead when I got here, but. well, there's two other position I want to make. One, we've, we've got one for Joseph, a foreman. They used to call him a lead when I got here, but they had no job description. He even said they're supervisors. So people said, I'm not going to listen to him. He's not my supervisor. Well, now they do. So the other one I like to make for David because he needs help for day to day. And then our chief um operator, he has no supervisory um job description out at our wastewater treatment plant water. He, he's oversees that. So he would be the other foreman and I'm recommending they, the, the current one makes fifty-five, that they would make fifty-eight. Um, they aren't, I can't exempt them because they're actually working people. So it'd get in trouble eh, um, exempting them. So that's what I ask. I know, and I can tell you, I looked up Sebring's just before I came here. In fact, I got it in there. Their mid-level, they have a low, a mid and a high. Their mid-level is sixty-six, five, I think for supervisors. And their foremen's are sixty. So this would still be and, and I don't know if they exempt them or not, but I would never try to exempt these here when you're out working. So that, that's my request there.
So feedback on the two requests there for the three percent and for the supervisory positions?
When is the last time that we've increased it? Do you know?
When I got here, supervisor made about forty-two thousand dollars. Last year I got it up to sixty. And like I said, when I look at what some of these happened to me, I was a captain at Sheriff's Office and everyone, my five lieutenants all made more money than me. That's because they got overtime and I didn't. And I, it's just, you, you won't have supervisors. They'll say, why should I supervise? You know, when I can go out here and make my overtime and so.
Right.
So yeah, it's, it's like I said, it's gone up. When I got here, supervisor, believe it or not, was making forty-two thousand dollars. I think that's what Robert was making.
It's gone up a little bit every year, right?
Yes.
Answer the question.
Well, Mary, can I say something?
Sure.
Only problem I have is you know, just since I've been sitting here, which November be two years, it seems like the supervisor and everybody else getting thousands of dollars, you know, income increase. But when we looking at the employees, you know, last year we didn't give them anything and now this year it's a three percent. My point I'm trying to make is I get the importance of a supervisor, a manager and all of that. I get that. They're our big chiefs, but without the Indians, they ain't nobody.
They, they are, they are.
And so, and so you keep giving them a higher raise and higher raise, but when it comes to the actual employee, I, I think our purpose is to try to keep them here and not try to go to Walmart. And, and eventually, you know, we, we just had, we, we just had to, you know, fill all these spots. For whatever reason, was it the COVID? Was it because you weren't paying enough? But we just filled a lot of spots. And I think we should look at, why is that? Why did the city have so many openings available? Is it because everybody else beating us out? Mark, I heard you say, you know, this is what Sebring is playing. I'm quite sure our budget don't look like Sebring. That's, that's my take on it.
Last year and the year before, they, they got three percent pay raise on employees. The supervisors are extremely underpaid and I don't care where you go to work, supervisors do make a lot more money because they put out, that's a responsibility, accountability. Nothing gets, yeah, nothing gets done without, say the Indians, I get that. But nothing gets done without a good, good supervisor, a good boss, a good leader, and you've got to pay them because they are the ones that will jump ship. For people that are paying more money.
I agree with all of that.
And I can tell you, we had a lot of openings. One was COVID because nobody could hire anybody. And I don't care whether it was another good, they, they have fifty-five openings to board a county commissioners. If anybody wants to go to work, probably find a job down there. Um, working for the county. Another thing was, not to beat up a prior HR director, but when he left and I had to do two jobs and thank goodness Liz was helping me and finance helped. We started putting people on because we saw people were putting in that weren't being interviewed. And now our new HR director too, we see people, we get them in, we're interviewing. So it's kind of, it was kind of a two thing. One, some people didn't want to work. And when I went into the system, I found there was a lot of people to put in for jobs that weren't brought in for interviews. So we brought them in backgrounds and, and we've hired a lot. We're I pulled that up where we are now. We're
Well, why are you doing that? Do you mind if I say something real quick?
Sure.
I, I definitely see Bernice's point. And, and uh, I see that, you know, if we give the the city employees three percent and some of these other positions are going to go up like ten percent. So I figure, well, what if we give the supervisors and foreman like five percent? But then I look at it, like we're only talking about a thousand or two thousand dollars a year. So to me, that's just penny pinching on people that are really important to us, the people that we need to keep. And so to save a few thousand dollars on a few foreman, a few supervisors, I, I just don't, I don't think it's worth it. I think we you're, I think you're absolutely right Bernice in what you said that, but we also got to take care of those people. And in order to keep them and realize that, you know, let's say if we didn't give them a raise at all, how would they feel compared to the people below? Like you said, I've been in a position before where I, they asked me to be a manager yeah, many years ago and I was many years ago. And, and, and I would have cost me like twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year in overtime. And, and basically the company that I worked for, which most of you know, most of the managers until they got to be having twenty years as a manager, were, were making less than the employees outside because the employees outside were making anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars a year in overtime. So they were making big bucks and, and so the only thing you get is that basically inside managers didn't have to go outside and work. But here, our managers here, they do go outside and work because a lot of time, somebody doesn't show up and we need them. So I, I, I think that I, you have a really good point, but to save a few thousand dollars on a few people, I, I think it's better for us to give them a little bit more what he's asking for. And I think it's, I think it's just fairer that way.
I think it'd be great for the morale of the employees here. I can just see them just smiling. You know, they thinking about us.
And you know what? I asked them all last, last time they gave raise, excuse me. And I asked them all how they all were doing. And I think a lot of the comments I got is they just got the raises in October is now when it starts. And that, and they all said, yeah, we just got our first paycheck with our first raise. And this was the employees here as well as the fire department, and they were full of smiles. So.
Two, two years ago when I came in front of council, um, I think it was five to none, but we raised the starting rate from ten dollars and thirty-six cents an hour to over fourteen. Some people, because we had to redo the steps, some people got a six or seven dollar an hour pay raise overnight. So I get what you're saying. I'd love to, you know, you want to give them five percent, I'm all for that. I'm all for the employee, but I know there's only such money. We're already pulling from the reserves. And you know, I, I, I would say that we're, the employees myself are blessed at the council since I've been here is actually seeing what's going on. We've got.
I was actually talking about just the five percent on the supervisors and foreman. I'm still good with the three percent on the employees.
No, I know. I'm not, no, I'm not saying that. Um, I, I still think they ought to get to sixty-seven, but that's just my thought. But we, we, right now we have a total of ninety-seven um full-time employee positions and we have ninety working. So we're, we're seven down and we're already working on some of them with getting them interviewed and getting them in those positions.
Other comments, questions?
I'm, I'm good with everything as is.
Don't worry people, the bill is coming on the next few slides.
So you guys are okay with all those adjustments?
It's, anyone opposed to this?
I'm not.
Okay, looks like as is.
Okay.
Put this slide in here for further discussion. Do you have anything?
Oh, yeah, I just got one more. The um Florida retirement system has a senior management and it's for basically a department head. Melody in particular and probably would be a public works director. They can, under the Florida retirement system, which Sebring does it and the county is just going to it with theirs, they can get thirty.
Thirty-four point five.
Thirty point, thirty-four point, whatever, per, five percent in F R S. Um, we're still checking because I want to know, one, does council have to approve that if it moves that? Or is F R S saying that's what everybody gets or what? But we're still looking into it.
So the city's match stays the same, but they can contribute up to thirty-four point five percent? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, the city pays more money. They still pay their three percent.
I see.
It's basically to keep people like Melody or if we got someone in here who was good u- utilities director to keep them here and in the F R R system that they're earning, they'll earn more, they'll get more money in the retirement system than the average employee.
I see.
When I was at the sheriff's office, the, the senior civilian staff was in it.
So you're checking on that and you'll get back to us?
We're checking on it. I don't have all the answers and I, you know, I want to give all the answers to you before you make a decision.
Got it. Anything else before we get into the general fund, millage and ROI? Seeing none. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is just a small spreadsheet that shows um the general fund. If we stay with the mills that we're at right now, the four point three six eight one. Um, with just the personnel expenses and operating expenses, we're almost one point two million um in the red. If we bring through the ROI from the water wastewater fund of one, almost one point seven million and include the cost of living raise um adjustment, that'll break us even using one point seven million from the water sewer fund. And then our capital expenditures total five thirty-four, three fifty. So that's what we would be pulling from reserves.
Okay, so the one point seven million, uh, would that be drawing on the reserves of that fund?
No, it would be so no, because that, the um water wastewater fund makes almost one point six million. So we would just be pulling one point two. They would still be in the black.
So they would be adding to their reserves?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, before capital.
Before capital. Okay. So the reserve in that fund is right at a hundred percent, isn't it?
Yeah, we have uh, at the end of twenty-four, we'll have seven point one million.
Which represents a hundred percent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I see no reason to add to the reserves there, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So effectively, we can draw the full one point seven?
We could draw one point nine.
One point nine?
Yep. That's the maximum we could draw, but we don't need it. So.
Okay. So I'm looking at in all these scenarios, you've got the four point three, the rollback to four point oh five. Is that what we were previous year?
Yes.
Okay. So if you do that, then we would still be decreasing five hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
Yes, because that's the capital. Yeah.
Okay. And that capital expenditure is coming from where?
The capital will be coming from reserves because we have seven point two million in reserves in the general fund.
Okay.
So it's customary to take capital out of reserves.
Okay. And do you know what percentage our reserves are sitting at?
I think it's uh three point three months.
Three point three.
I'm sorry, thirty-three point three.
Thirty-three point three months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I know that there are regulations as to how far you can get. Do you have any idea what it is for that fund?
I don't, but I can find out.
Okay.
And it's not, I'm sorry, it's not thirty-three. It's three months, three point three three.
Months.
Months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Which we put it at roughly twenty-five to twenty-seven percent, somewhere in that. Okay. I know any fund you can go up to a hundred percent. That much is certain. Okay. Is there a scenario where we can uh not draw from reserves out of that fund?
I did not put that on here, but I can.
And also what is this total, what are we assuming for the mill or uh fire assessment?
I have not clu- included that in here because we haven't made a decision yet. So once we make the decision, that'll be another two hundred and seventy thousand.
Do you know what the range is on the different scenarios that we put in there for the fire assessment?
The.
The minimum that we advertised versus the maximum?
I don't know.
Okay. Are you asking for a vote on this or?
No, no, I just wanted to give you guys an idea of, you know, where we were. We um the budget is based on the five mil. But we put the notice out at six mil. So I just wanted you guys to see that.
Okay.
And then the water wastewater fund, um, as we discussed earlier, they're in the black, one point five million after personnel and operating costs. Um, they have a transfer in from the airport. And these scenarios show the same, the ROI comes out of this fund and goes into the general fund. Um, so with all the capital expenditures, if we stayed at the five, the current rate, we're taking two point one million out of reserves. If we go with the five mil that the budget is based on, we take one point eight out of reserves.
Okay.
And the sanitation fund is in the red. It brings, it, it'll be in the red after personnel and operating two hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So.
Okay. And san- sanitation fund derives its revenue from garbage collection?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
What would uh prevent us from changing our garbage collection rates?
We just need to do a study and we've kind of worked on it. Um, but we haven't really delved into it.
Is it something that can be done in-house or does that?
Yes, we can do it in-house. Yeah.
What length of time are we talking?
I would say three months, maybe.
I think it's fair to assume that we know that they're low. Obviously we're losing money.
Yeah, they're very low. And I had, last year I had the comparison, um, what Sebring was, you know, what their charges were in the county, but I apologize, I didn't put it in here. But they are above us on everything.
Mark, do you think uh we'll be able to devote the time necessary to do that study?
Yes, because it's got to get done. Melanie gets this budget done is the, the main thing because we're pretty close to it.
Yeah, I did, August of last year, I have a whole bunch of information compiled, but we had a question about the dumpsters, how to charge the dumpster rate.
Okay. So going forward, what does our vote schedule look like for finalizing our budget?
So ho- I would hope that you guys have to meet with the CRA advisory board and discuss their budget.
Okay.
Um, I would hope, go ahead. Did you want to say something?
No, you said, they moved month, they took the total amount, which they're supposed to have moved in on the line items to talk with you at your joint meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And they did a good job, right, Jim?
Yes, they did. Took a while, but they got there.
Okay.
So I would hope that at the meeting that we have on the twenty-eighth, that we can finalize everything and just be ready for the tentative um in the final. We, I would kind of need to consensus on where you think the um millage rate should fall.
Okay. So you're looking for a consensus here tonight?
Yeah, just so that I can prepare the budget accordingly.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Really have any comments other than the changes we made? Those changes that we talked about tonight will be in next weekend, next meeting?
Yes, on the twenty-eighth. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. My two cents for this would be uh to draw on the fire assessment as much as possible and not raise the millage uh as much as possible. Uh, also the full return on investment of the one point nine million uh be in favor of taking that. So we're not adding to the reserves in that particular fund since we're already at a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that because we need to definitely stay under five mil. So.
Okay.
So if you, if you stay with the current millage rate that we have, well, it's still raises the taxes because property values increase.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
Right, but it's still the same mill.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So that's what I would be looking for is uh, is it possible to uh keep the millage at what it is? Um, at most go to, you know, four point five eh without drawing from um, general fund reserves.
Okay.
That'd be the goal.
Okay.
I agree.
Me as well.
Anything else as this budget meeting is drawing to a close? Going once, anything else from staff?
No, thank you.
There's one quick one. You talked about the fire assessment because it was at fifty-five percent. I don't have all of them, but that would be the residential move up to a hundred and eighty-five.
Okay. We will be deciding the second reading of, or we haven't had, even had a first reading on that yet. Now we just put it out for notice. So that would be decided, it would take two meetings, right?
Yeah, we just did the resolution. So it'll be going out in the paper and a letter tomorrow will be in the paper and all the citizens will be receiving something in the mail soon.
Okay. So it would be our August twenty-eighth and the following meeting?
I think it's Sept- I think it's September eleventh, right?
Okay.
That, that CRA part of that meeting on the twenty-eighth, that's probably going to take a little bit. Longer than normal too, don't you think? So we might have to start early again.
Yes, we schedule it for five. They all said they could be here.
Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none there.
Sorry. So on the twenty-eighth, there's a special budget meeting. Right? At five? Okay, it's at four. And then the CRA at five thirty and then regular budget at.
It's four, five and six.
So glad I asked.
Yep.
So are we.
I'll send you an updated email.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Anything else for the good of the city?
Well, thank you.
Seeing none, entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
For a whole eleven minutes.